We're calling this meeting the Friendswood City Council June 6th meeting. We had a forum, we're going to invite Mike Ross, Pastor Mike Ross from Church of Christ, to come up and invitate for us, and please remain standing afterwards and we will say the pledge.
Let's pay for a moment. Well, we got, we're seeking your blessings on our gathering today, and pray that your rich blessings will always be with our city and with our leaders. Lord, we're seeking the gift of your presence in their lives as they lead our community. So may you bless them with, in their guidance, with wisdom and discernment. May you empower them with boldness and courage. May you sustain them with strength and fortitude. And may our leaders and our volunteers serve with integrity and honesty and truth. And so Father, as citizens and as neighbors, we pray that we'll always walk in your mercy and celebrate your grace, that we will embrace and impart forgiveness. We thank you for the city of Friendswood and all the fine folks that serve our community, and we pray your rich blessings to continue. For before you, because of your love, and pray in the power of your spirit, in the name of Christ, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thanks, Bob. Appreciate you being here. You need City Councilmember head duty? Good to have you here, councilmember. May you have any cards?
Yes, sir.
All right. I didn't find, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sticking with council comments and reports. I'll go first and just report the sad news. Our official city historian Joyce Baker passed away just a day or two ago. I'm feeling a bit her, she was always, you not hearing Phil? Katie, am I coming out on the thing? Technology. All over these batteries.
No more vacation for ladies.
No more vacation. So I was talking about our official historian Joyce Baker passed away this past weekend. She was a good friend and always enjoyed getting together with her. She always had stories about how Friendswood started out and how it evolved and developed into this great place that it is. Was just talked to her son a little bit ago, and her services will be this Saturday, I think 10 o'clock at Friends Church. After that, I'll turn it over to you, Steve, if you want to go. You got anything?
Yeah, well, I wanted to echo how sad we are to see Joyce's passing, and she was a great friend as well. The library is having a sensational summer readings session. They have over 600 children signed up. You can still register, and there's a chance to earn prizes. There's a Nintendo Switch for young adults, or an escape room party, a virtual reality party for adults and families, and you can register at the library. And also, there's going to be this Thursday, a magic show from 1:00 to 2:30, if you want to bring your kids to.
So I too echo the sentiments. Joyce was my friend. Each time we were together, I learned something new. Her knowledge of Friendswood's history was limitless. After her book was published, she was in great demand for speaking engagements. She took pride in fact that no two presentations were alike. She was a very gifted storyteller. As much as she enjoyed sharing our city's history, she also had a vision for our future. She was an excellent resource, especially when FDFA was in its infancy. More than once, the question was that, well, what does Joyce think? She was gracious enough to serve on the original FDFA Advisory Board, and was established in 2015. We're truly blessed that Ellen Joycina Day Baker adopted Friendswood as her hometown, and willingly shared her gifts. I miss her.
Thanks, Sally.
Thank you, Sally. I also miss Joyce already. She and I met in 1990, when I was an assistant principal, and I, she used a sub on our campus. And I met a very graceful, humble, and wise woman, and I like that graciousness that you just mentioned, Sally. She will be missed, and we need more people like her. I also want to give our police department some kudos, after the tragedy in Uvalde, which is, you know, very near and dear to me. And to know what all happened, and to be someone that's gone through many hours of NIMs training. Our police department here in Friendswood, even though our school districts do not employ their own police departments, they are top of their game. And I think they do a fantastic job of being ready, and as ready as anybody can be for something so horrific. But, but they're ready in all ways, not just tactically, and in training, and involving school personnel and community, but in the counseling part, in reaching out to the community. And so, I want to reassure people that Friendswood Police Department is, they're very aware of what goes on and what risks are, and they also, most of them live here in this community, and feel the same things that we all feel. And so, thank you, Bob, and if you would relay that to your department, too. I have the utmost respect and appreciation for y'all, and thought about that during all of those news conferences. Also went to several committees, the Keep Friendswood, I mean, not Keep Friendswood Beautiful, the senior citizens, and they are rocking and rolling. They are a busy group for being senior citizens. And P and Z, which always has something going on, and we have two members here that aren't always at our meetings, and so welcome to y'all, but we know how important they are, too. So thank you for all that you do.
Well, Mayor, I just echo all the sentiments that's been mentioned up here by my fellow colleagues, and Joycina was a great friend and a mentor, and the city will miss her. And I too, my heart goes out to all those families that are suffering down in Uvalde, and I am too thankful for our police department. As far as any liaison reports, Samantha will be up here a little later on, and she'll be going over a plethora of things that we're working on, so I'll just save anything I'm going to have at that time for those comments. But, just some wonderful words from you all, thanks.
John Scott. On a little bit lighter note, the Friendswood High School Boys Baseball Team made it to the state championship tournament, which begins Thursday at 4:00. They'll play Mansfield Legacy. If they win that game, they go on to the state championship, which will be played Saturday. So it's at Dell Diamond in Round Rock, so if you can go and support the team, please do. It's a huge accomplishment. You know, they made it to the regional finals last year, and then this year, they got over that hump, and now they're in the state tournament. So, very exciting time to be a Friendswood Mustang and a part of that baseball team. So, they're representing our community very well.
Brett.
I just want to mention to remember, today's the anniversary of D-Day, so as we're all going to the beach this summer, remember that we're going there because of that other battle that happened on the beach back then, that we wouldn't be able to go there without their battle at that beach.
Thank you. Go back.
Sorry, I did have some fun, I failed. Mayor's correct, Joyce Baker's service will be Saturday at 10:00 at French Church, and there's a visitation at Jeter on Friday from 5:00 to 7:00.
So you had to go back to say that I was correct? How often does that happen?
You're very welcome.
Yes. Thank you, Stephen.
And visitation.
Yeah, I got it. I was just giving you a hard time. All right. Next is public comment. Bear with me. Let's see if this thing will work here. How about now? Didn't mean now, Katie? I got a green light. Green mean go. Okay. Public comment, "In order to comply with the provisions of the Texas Open Meetings Act, the City Council may not deliberate any item not listed on the agenda. As such, the City Council will listen to public comment and may, one, refer the item to City Management for further action, or, two, direct staff for the placement of said item on a future agenda. During public comment, the public shall refrain from any outbursts or interjections, including but not limited to applause, disparaging noises, and remarks. Furthermore, any personnel complaints against the city employee, aside from the city manager, city attorney, or municipal judge, should not be discussed and shall be referred to City Management. Each speaker shall give his/her name for record-keeping purposes. The rules allow each person three minutes to present information. Time clock will flash a yellow light when there are 30 seconds remaining on the allotted time, and flash a red light with a beeping sound when the time has expired. Please wrap up your comments at that time." Pastor Mike Ross.
Just a quick word for you and our council. A word of appreciation and gratitude. I just feel blessed every day, and a big part of it is living in Friendswood. And I just want to give a shout out and a lot of thanks to Manager Mo and our Director Tony for all their efforts, and all the work that's going on downtown, and just making Friendswood stay beautiful, really cool. Our park is just awesome. I just really feel blessed to be a part of this community and have the leadership that we do, and I just wanted to say thank you for all of your efforts, your service, and your time. God bless.
Thank you, Mike. And they say it's a thankless job. See, right there. Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Item six, committees or special reports. We have the Library Board's annual report. Diane Freeman, I see you getting up.
Yes, sir.
Oh, it says right here, "Presentation by Diane Freeman." I just had to turn the page.
Must be me, then, eh?
Great.
Okay. This is the clicker, I guess. All right. Just a moment. Okay. I am, good evening. I am going to be talking about three different aspects for this report. One is covering the board, the next is the Friends of the Library, and then the library operations itself. With respect to the board, we have added, and I'm going to introduce them to you, librarian liaisons for the library. One is from the Friendswood Independent School District, Shauna Lewis, and the other is from Clear Creek Independent School District, Arshon Ozin, right? Pronounce that. Okay. And we, the whole purpose of that was to get a background of the schools, and let them display what they are doing, that maybe something from the library will be supporting them, could support them, and then also, the library can also be communicating the things that they do, and the schools can benefit from them, from that. So that's sort of a win-win situation. The board is currently getting involved with the strategic planning for the next five years or so, and there's going to be a long-range planning meeting on Town Hall, scheduled for July the 19th. Now, the basis of that is because the first of the year, this current year, there was a survey that was sent out to the public to try to get an assessment of their feelings about the library, what they liked, what they didn't like, and maybe what more they want. And so, we got quite a bit of response back, good, very excellent response back from the community, stating that they really enjoy the physical resources, and the online, and everything, but they're, and they really enjoy all the meetings that we have, the classes that we have, and the programs that are being made available. But they did recognize that their, the patrons would really like to have additional workspace, study rooms, and other spaces for doing technological type of tasks. So that, those results will be pertinent to what the Town Hall will be communicating, or, I mean, having to discuss at that July 19th meeting. With respect to the Friends of the Library, well, I think you know what the big highlight of that was, and that was the March Night Surface Gala, where the Friends raised over $43,000. The purpose of that was to get, to purchase a outreach fan, and we're waiting to be able to do that. There just doesn't seem to be any available for what we can spend. The Friends are also, has raised over $6,000. This bumps up that value that's on the screen, because we recently had a book sale, and that brought it up above the $6,000 since the October of last year. And also, the Friends are paying for, are, you know, paying for the construction of poetry books that have come from the poems that were presented at the previous Ekfrastic Poetry Contest, and we'll be talking about that later. So Friends have really been very instrumental in bringing in a lot of money for the library. Now, the final here is about the library. For the eighth year, the library has won the, excuse me, the Achievement and Library Excellence Award, and this is really great. They continue, the library is continuing to host the summer reading programs. This one for this year just opened up a week ago, and the noise level between two weeks ago and this, and that last week, it's just gotten tremendously large or loud because of all the children that are coming in and having all the children's programs. So it's very, very good. In addition to the summer programs, there is also, has been, and will be, a Work Film Festival, and the Zacky Khan Anime Events, that are always very popular with the older children. And then the Ekfrastic Poetry Contest will be happening again. And you see the countries that submitted their poems from last year, well, it's about the same for this year, apparently, and plus, one, people from China and Nigeria have submitted their poems. One new thing, and y'all, I think, got a copy of it, called the Library Lines. Did you pass that? Okay, thank you. And, and that comes out monthly, and you will see that it has, it's, comes out in the library, so it's not online. And it gives music reviews, book reviews, word games, calendars, coming attractions for the month. And so, it's very, very handy and very useful, and it's an success. Now, the next one. Last year at this time, we wanted a digital media specialist. We really, really needed it, and tried to provide some insight as to how we needed it and why. And lo and behold, we were given that, given the new full-time addition to the staff, which we really appreciate. And the next final two slides will express what is, what that person is doing for the library. First of all, he maintains all the online databases, website, and social media. He keeps the usage statistics, and makes recommendations for all the new online services and resources. If a user has a problem with some kind of device that's at the, at the library, then he can contact the online vendors, one-on-one, to be able to troubleshoot what the problem is. He is also running and maintaining the printers, the 3D printer, the poster printer, and all the other kinds of printers and devices that we have. In addition, the, he also is cognizant of all the needs that the patrons seem to be having, and tried to provide those, or identify that maybe something needs to be received. Next, he works one-on-one with the computer needs of the library patrons. If they need help in how to use the computer or some new device, then he is there to take that, take over that responsibility, rather than having someone in the past who has had to do this. He is also the one who has created those Library Lines newsletters, and so, that's been a very positive thing, too. He meets, he's been meeting with the staff of the different departments in the library to understand their needs and what maybe they are doing, and he in turn can maybe identify certain things that might help them, and then he can also come up with ways for them to get better resources. He is cross-trained to work at service desks as needed, in case a staff can't, a certain staff can't be there, for whatever reason. And so, finally, with the increased efficiency and support from this digital media specialist, the staff has been able to add new requested programming, including new, new book clubs, and learning classes, and other programs and services. Thank you.
Thanks, Diane. Item seven, receive and discuss an update regarding the drainage projects. Deputy Director of Engineering Samantha Heratose.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. So this map is up here, for a recap, y'all have seen this map before. Just starting from the north, the purple area is the proposed FM 1959 Detention Pond. The red area is Imperial Estates. The lime-green is Forest Bend Detention, the 53-acre detention pond. There's a small orange area at the southern portion of Clear Creek on the Galveston County side, that is Frenchman's Creek Town Homes, where we're looking to acquire the properties. And then the star is the utility rack crossing on Clear Creek. So, we have several community development block grant disaster recovery projects that are continuing forward. Frenchman's Creek, at this time, Building 5, offers have been made and accepted, so hopefully, in less than 30 days, those will close, because I put this together about a week ago, so hopefully, we're a little further. For Building 4, there are offers in progress. There are one or two units that are hoping to look at getting a second offer at their own cost, but everything is moving forward, is, you know, is where, everything looks good so far. And then simultaneously, to our community development block grant for Buildings 4 and 5, the buildings furthest from Clear Creek are under a community development block grant with Galveston County, and I believe that those are a little, not, not quite far as along as ours, but I think offers have been made on, on some of those.
Those are Buildings 1, 2, and 3, right?
Yes, 1, 2, and 3, correct. And then, there's a, well, so there's a, so there's a property, if you're on the southern side of Clear Creek on the Galveston County side, immediately to the northeast, right there along the creek, is a .947 acre property, and the city is working to close, or, the city has had a sales offer on that, and we're working to close that out. FMO is going to be here talking about that a little bit later, and it will be up to Council to make a determination on whether we should go forward with that. We have another acquisition project that is occurring in the Deepwood area. There are eight structures that look like they're going to move forward, potentially. So we have approvals, and those are currently waiting on the environmental assessment, and I'm going to get to that on the next slide. So this is on the infrastructure side. The Forest Bend Detention Pond is its own grant, and that project is ready to move forward to construction. Engineering has selected a construction contractor, it's Jaden, or, sorry, Jordan Enterprises. And the project is a 53-acre foot capacity detention pond with meandering layout, concrete trails, and solar lighting. The Deepwood Flood Control Project is currently in the engineering phase, and we just finished completing survey for that property, or for those properties. We ended up using WIDAR. It was surprisingly affordable, so I guess WIDAR is really coming a long way. It's the aerial drone flying over the property. And right now, they are working on finalizing the engineering design. The depth was holding things up a little bit, but we should have that really soon. And then the environmental assessment for the Deepwood property and the Frenchman's Creek property should move forward. The utility relocation project, the engineering is complete, and we're just awaiting on the authorization of grant funds, and then that will move forward into construction.
On Forest Bend, how did that cost come in compared to what we had?
Sure, I have, I have notes on that right here. Okay, so the grant award was for 3.426 million. The construction estimate, they, and there were three different ones that came in, we selected the lowest bid. It was also what we felt was the best qualified, it came in at 3.63 million, but we have already expended $435,048 on engineering.
And just to remind Council and the public, this grant was a direct allocation from the General Land Office through Harris County. It wasn't specific to Forest Bend Detention. What they did was said, you're getting an allocation of 3.4 million dollars. You find a flood control project that's as close to that as possible, submit an application to the GLO, and we will review and approve it. So, the project that we developed and submitted to them met the qualifications and eligibility requirements of the General Land Office. This wasn't a situation where we overran budget, it was simply, we were trying to find a project as close to as possible as the allocation that was granted. We do have funds available to supplement the GLO dollars to make the project a reality. This provides the only detention pond to the Forest Bend subdivision, because the subdivision previously didn't have one when it was built in the 80s.
Thanks, Mo.
What was the $400,000 in engineering studies that was done? That was specifically for the Forest Bend Detention Pond?
Yes, it was specifically for the Forest Bend Detention Pond. It included site survey, geotechnical, a detailed H&amp;H analysis, landscaping, they put together a nice wetland planting package that's going to go in there, plans and specs. So there was a lot of engineering that, that went into the design.
And the piece of property that's going with, that simultaneously as the properties on Building 5 with Frenchman Creek, does the person who owns the 9 point, .94 acres also own a building in Frenchman Creek 5?
They own a unit within Building 5.
That's what I was, I wasn't quite sure on that, clear on that. And if we do not approve the .94 purchase, will they still sell the Frenchman Creek unit?
Not likely, is at least what they've indicated to us. However, the property lends itself nicely to, to expanding our footprint there to do a flood mitigation project in the future.
Yeah, I just wanted, I just wanted a little clarification.
Yes, sir.
All right. Moving forward, so the next project, this is not a community development block grant, we're, like, those are all the ones we just talked about, this is moving forward. Okay. So 212 East Heritage, this is a partnership project with Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District. So approximately 650 feet south of the FM 2351 Bridge along Mary's Creek. This property is located on the Galveston County side, well, it's, sorry, it's in Mary's Creek. So the, the project, it's an inter-local agreement with GCCDD. They would be responsible for acquiring the property and also doing construction on the property to terraced it. And our cost contribution would be a fifty percent share of a hundred and forty thousand, nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars that would go towards the flood control project of terracing. So the inter-local agreement is going to be on tonight's agenda. I can share that this already went before the GCCDD board and was approved. So they're excited to work with us on this effort.
May I just mention something here to the, to the council if they don't know it? The, the P, the property here was pretty much forced out of the ability to use it because of our change to the map, to the Atlas fourteen. And the, and the woman that owns the property and her daughter were in a situation where they couldn't build there anymore because the Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District pretty much took the, the, the water away, away from them. So this is really important, I believe, to see that the, this woman and her daughter get made whole. I really think this is a good thing that we're doing personally.
And it ties in very nicely to the Imperial Estates, the Harold Whitaker Detention Basin that's just downstream of that location.
So this is an exhibit of the property along Mary's Creek.
Can I make a, a comment about this property? This property actually has some interesting history. Frank Brown, Frank Brown built the first house in the adjacent property right there. And that spot was where they built a, a series of locks, and they ran a canal, which is now Heritage Drive. They ran a canal all the way over to about where your house is, Robert, yours and my house. And they, they, they used that little, little property there to, to run, to, to generate water out of the creek to run down the canal for the rice fields.
That's really interesting. You can tell, too, that the creek has really meandered based on the, so the, the black lines or the parcels. And then the creek isn't lining up exactly in this area anymore. It's fascinating. Okay, the FM nineteen fifty-nine detention basin, this slide has been presented to you before. There are only a couple of small changes, but this is the approximately seventeen hundred acre feet detention pond located up at the very northernmost part of Clear Creek on the Harris County side up next to Pearland. We are still coordinating with Harris County Flood Control District. We had submitted an application for a partnership project. The partnering agencies that were part of that application include the City of Friendswood, Galveston County, Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District, and Harris County Flood Control District. From, uh, we, we've, there's been a lot going on behind the scenes since the, the last meeting. But Harris County Flood Control District has up to fourteen million to contribute to this project. And we are still falling about four point seven five million to five million dollars short. So in the meantime, and I'm going to let Mo talk about this a little bit, but we have met with Texas State Representative Greg Bonin and U.S. Representative Troy Nels. And we've had some, some different discussions ongoing, and I'll let you get into that a little bit.
The staff is working with all the entities that Samantha mentioned, plus our state and federal representatives on potentially combining this project along with the Wickham Project and doing a larger-scale flood mitigation project of which that we can get some assistance from state and federal agencies. So the deal's not done as of right now, but Harris County Flood Control District has agreed to take the lead on it. They're drafting the inter-local agreement that Samantha referenced. And we hope to have something to y'all by the end of summer, if not the fall, that we can present for consideration. If so, it'd be a good win for Friendswood and for everybody within the lower Clear Creek watershed.
And I, I believe League City is interested in participating in that effort.
Yes, they, they want to see.
That Hank Doogie walked in, council member from League City, and it would be behoove them to take a real hard look at this because it does benefit League City quite a bit. So if they wanted to step up and partner with us on some of this, that would be much appreciated.
Did you bring your checkbook? Did you bring your checkbook?
Okay, so while we have that moving on, the state of Texas, for the first time ever, is working on a statewide flood plan. And at this, at this point in time, the lower Clear Creek and Dickinson Bayou Study has made it into that plan. And this is, I'm trying to figure out how to kind of tie this all together. But, um, so taking a step back from that, the City of Friendswood has had Freeze and Nichols working on modeling several different individual measures for us, a, as well as modeling them all together. And these are the measures that, that Mo was talking about. The FM nineteen fifty-nine detention basin, terracing at Wickham and/or detention. They're, they're looking to see if a detention pond on that property would be helpful based on its location in the flood plain, as well as an offline detention pond at Black Hawk that, um, that could be approximately six hundred acre feet. They're, they're still working on the final size and possibly terracing along the creek, along that Black Hawk property as well. So they will have the results to us here shortly, and that will include benefit exhibits and cost information. And we're hoping to take that information and provide it as an additional alternative to that lower Clear Creek plan that is Friendswood-centric or Friendswood-focused. And we've been coordinating with, um, with the engineering team that is putting the state flood plan together. And they are pretty much ready and waiting for us to send them this information so it can be included in the state flood plan. So next meeting, we'll have a lot more on, on that, or the next drainage update.
And the benefit of including this, obviously, as grant funds become available, we better qualify and position ourselves strategically for those competitions.
Yeah, going forward, the plan is that a lot of these grants that we've been individually applying for are going to filter through the, the Texas Water Development Board. And if your project is not identified in the state flood plan, you will not be eligible for state and/or federal funding. So it's really important that any large projects, we get those in the state flood plan. So these have been presented before, but just kind of to visualize the projects we've been talking about, this is the terracing along the Wickham tract. And this is located in the, the floodway. They're looking at, Freeze and Nichols is looking at whether this specific alignment or, you know, potentially a little bit different alignment with the detention basin onsite would be the most beneficial for Friendswood. This is the Black Hawk Detention.
Samantha, on that previous slide?
Yes.
I can't, I can't read it, but what are the, like, the lines that say A, B, C, D, what are those?
So those are, this is an engineering drawing, and those are just, those are cross-section lines that were then also in the hydraulic model. There's probably, uh, no, I don't think we had, I don't think they showed us. Well, we, we have, so we do have some drawings that show, like, the profile view where it shows the land along that, the land elevation, based on survey data or the topography. But, um, this is the Black Hawk Detention Basin. The blue area is the existing five acre pond. The yellow areas, we would have to acquire those properties if we went forward with this project. The green area is, is land we own, but the yellow, the yellow areas are landlocked properties at this point in time. And then it would be expanding the, this pond to the, to a size that would help to mitigate any of the Wickham terracing project from having downstream impacts. And potentially, we, there may be terracing along Clear Creek as well, but.
Samantha, can you just expand upon the comment about landlocked for us, please?
Sure, by landlocked, there's no access to these properties.
Does West Ranch Management District own those?
No, they do not. They're privately held. You may recall, we acquired the property this time last year through an agreement with the West Ranch Management District. When they developed, or they executed their first contract with the City of Friendswood in two thousand and five, they were obligated to donate this property for parkland at some point in the future of our choosing. Well, that point was this, this time last year. We are obligated to develop some sort of passive park at this location in conjunction with it serving as a flood mitigation slash detention slash terracing project. This one is the most costly of all the other projects mentioned thus far. Estimated cost anywhere from the thirty to forty million dollar range. Simply put, it's too low on the flood plain. It's got too many wetlands that are encumbering the tract and would require some level of pumped, mechanical pumps to, to adequate, appropriately work.
Mo, on the, on the Wickham property, who tasked Freeze and Nichols to determine an alternative to just terracing and including possible detention?
So the, the City of Friendswood did, simply because all the modeling that we've seen terracing, unless you can terrace all the way directly to Clear Lake, would have impact downstream, so we have to mitigate. Originally, the Wickham property currently owned by Clear Creek Community Church was going to develop some sort of plan for their project and show the detention they needed and the subsequent easement that we would get for a terracing project. Since that project has stalled, the commercial project has stalled, we took up the engineering so that we can go ahead and determine what that cross-section of terracing would be, would be so that we can acquire the easement from the church.
How much did that cost us?
I don't remember the engineering study off the top of my head.
It's, it's been, it, it has not been very significant. I think they've done, and Hill, you can step in if you want. I think they've done two or three different studies for us, and they were about five thousand dollars apiece, is my recollection. Maybe fifteen thousand, twenty thousand at the absolute most.
Ultimately, if the, the project is selected, the engineering costs will be a lot higher than that. This is simply to, to run the modeling to determine the optimal cross-section for the terracing.
And, and as a, as another, so another, another reason why we're doing the modeling, to have your project in the state flood plan, you have to have, like, one of the cutoff lines that they're having for this first round is having a cost and a BCR ratio. So we need that information for our project to have a chance of being in there.
And we're putting all three, nineteen fifty-nine, Black, uh, Wickham, and Black Hawk, right?
Correct. They're, right now.
Didn't the state want us to do that and package, possibly package also so that they could take a look at it as a full package?
Yes, sir. I will add, because Samantha referenced benefit-cost ratios. The biggest hurdle that Friendswood has to clear on all of our projects is we don't, one, we don't benefit enough low-to-moderd income areas, so that automatically disqualifies us from a number of federal and state projects. Two, the cost of the project has to be less than or equal to the benefits received. And being so low in the flood plain, so close to the coast, we're going to expend exponentially more dollars than the benefit we get in return. So it's, we have a harder threshold to, to accomplish state and federal funding, so we're trying to do anything and everything we can to better situate our projects.
Okay, so that brings us to the Water Resources Development Act. So every two years, the Senate and the House for, since, since the seventies or maybe, let me scratch that, let me start over. So every two years, the Senate and the House, they put together a Water Resources Development Act, and then they take that to the floor and, and vote on it. So right now, the twenty twenty-two Water Resources Development Act has gone before the Senate Environment and Public Works Committee, and it's already been passed. And the, the version that they passed authorized sixteen Army Corps chief reports, seventy-two new feasibility studies, and completion of fifteen feasibility studies. And in the Senate Worda, it, it includes the lower Clear Creek and Dickinson Bayou Study and the Coastal Spine Study. The, um, the House still has not taken their final version and, and voted on it. But at this point in time, it also includes the lower Clear Creek and Dickinson Bayou Study as well as the Coastal Spine Study. The lower Clear Creek and Dickinson Bayou Study, I've, I've presented on that before, but you can find all the information on that study onsite. If you look it up online, it's held on the League City website. This is the study that we contributed approximately forty-one thousand dollars to. And there's great new one-D, two-D modeling. It looked at terracing throughout the watershed. It, it looked at tunnels. It looked at a number of different alternatives, starting from Pearland, Friendswood, all the way down to Clear Lake. So the, the goal is that they're, they're asking for three million for a feasibility study, which is, um, they're, they're hoping that the Army Corps will, will be funded to spend three million dollars to further develop the study. And the cost share, if that happens, it'll be a fifty-fifty cost share. So the Corps, the Army Corps of Engineers would contribute one and a half million, and the other one and a half million would be up to the local sponsors to find, which in this case would be League City, potentially Friendswood, Clear Lake, sorry, not Clear Lake, Clear Creek. I'm, like, having word issues.
The same, the same partnerships that worked with us on the original phase.
Yes. So just because, so if it, if it does make it into both the House and the Senate Worda, it does not mean that it's funded. The funding will be determined at the beginning of twenty twenty-three for each of these projects. So sometimes projects are identified in Worda, and they don't receive any funding. And they may go years without receiving funding. But it's the first step on the federal level that, that, that project made it in there. So, well, both, both the lower Clear, the lower Clear Creek project and the Coastal Spine project have made it in so far.
And as a reminder, the Coastal Spine project is the Ike Dyke. That's been discussed since two thousand eight, or nine.
So another potential source of funding that we're still hoping to see, the Houston-Galveston Area Council is going to have four hundred and eighty-eight million, seven hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars for distribution. They still have not, they still have not made a final determination on what the distribution method is going to be or how much funding different entities are going to receive. At this point, we are hoping to hear sometime this month, probably more towards June, possibly even July, but we're hoping to hear what that method of distribution is going to look like and potentially what Friendswood will receive. We've heard through the grapevine that it could be approximately six million, but that may change.
And our very own council member Branson sits on that committee, hopefully, working hard behind the scenes to, to help.
Do all I can.
So the, the last two slides are in response to some interest that there's been on downstream developments. The, the first slide is for the flyway mixed-use development. Seen a couple of different numbers for this site, but we, the engineering department has physically seen the twenty fifteen Phil Study that was completed by IDS Engineering. And it called for a hundred and sixty-two acres, potentially with another twenty acre area included that belongs to Webster. They plan on completing a detailed hydraulic and hydrology study that will be done sometime this summer, probably late June, early July timeframe. Yeah. But from initial discussions with Webster and IDS Engineering, they've been very forthcoming with information. They are hoping to, the, the Phil Study that was done in twenty fifteen has Harris County Flood Control District stamp of approval on it. So.
So this project and the subsequent slide that Samantha's going to go over was asked to be discussed at this council meeting. Namely, a number of you have seen articles in the community impact news of developments that League City's looking to incentivize commercially. They're well within the flood plain and floodway in lower Clear Creek before it outfalls into Clear Lake. Much like the Wickham property in Friendswood, these properties were several feet underwater during Harvey. It does not preclude their It does not preclude their development. Obviously, anything is developable if you have spent enough money on engineering and mitigation. Um, but tho- those activities are not complete at this time. So, we don't have anything of substance to report aside from the fact that we've been in communication with those agencies. Anything they build within the flood plain or floodway, they're gonna have to show us no hydraulic impact whatsoever to the city of Friendswood and anybody within the lower Clear Creek.
Yes, so this is the slide for the Riverview Mixed Use. Both of these look like they're gonna have a lot of boardwalk type features in them, a lot of outdoor green space. Um, this one, the League City Department of Engineering is uh planning, they're they're reviewing this study at the ti- at the time. I believe it's still in planning. From what we understand, there's not uh an exact or final determination of what the site plan is gonna look like. And they don't wanna release information until it's final, since things tend to change a lot, but.
Where is that Riverview Mixed Use Development?
Well, so this is this uh like reading on here, it's along I forty-five and Clear Creek.
So, just between five eighteen and uh five twenty-eight along forty-five where you cross Clear Creek.
And then the this one is on the other side of Clear Creek. They're kind of across from each other.
Near Top Golf and American Furniture is the Webster one.
I think American Furniture is actually part of this site plan. I I can I don't know if you can see it, but it's in the back on there.
Thanks Samantha, appreciate it.
Okay.
Any questions, any other questions? Appreciate it, great job.
Yes, ma'am, good job.
Okay, moving on, item eight, city manager's report, Murad Kabiri.
Yes, sir. Um, as you well know, we're well into the summer months. It's already getting hot outside, and that means the Fourth of July celebration is just around the corner. Uh, we will be kicking off the festivities on Monday, July fourth at ten AM with the grand parade down five eighteen, down Friendswood Drive. Uh, I believe Bob plans to be in the front again this year, unless we ask him not to be. Uh, after the grand parade, there will be a a day program at Stevenson Park at eleven AM where there will be some carnival rides and some vendor booths for um snacks and what have you. Uh, typically, mayor and council is recognized at this at the gazebo event. We take a few hours break, at least the people that attend these events take a few hours break. The Fourth of July Steering Committee and staff is constantly working uh approximately thirty hours that day um between the the morning of and then all the way through the next morning. Uh, at seven thirty, festivities kick back off for an evening program at Centennial Park uh with the more vendors, both for food and for um carnival rides. And then there will be a musical act that evening. And I apologize, the name slips my head right now unless James wants to. Party Crashers, yes. Party Crashers will be playing that evening. Uh, and then around, you have five of their albums, Trish?
Albums, that's right.
She has the eight-track set.
Got it, got it. Uh, and then approximately at nine twenty PM, there'll be a fireworks display that is always a nice closing to the Fourth of July festivities. Um, I'll thank James and your staff as well as the Fourth of July Steering Committee. They put in a lot of blood, sweat, and tears into these events, and they're always spectacular. We look forward to the one coming up in July.
One hundred and twenty-seventh consecutive celebration.
Yes, sir. It's a history and a streak that we don't wanna discontinue.
Right.
Uh, Waste Connections Scholarship, as they do each year, have awarded scholarships to uh Friendswood High School and Friendswood Area High Schools. Uh, Friendswood High School named Grant Newman uh as a recipient for the Waste Connections Scholarship. He hasn't decided on a university yet. I'm not thrilled with either one of those, Texas State or Texas Tech, but uh he plans to major in business. Uh, Erica Bonner in Clearbrook High School uh is planning on studying sign language interpreting uh at Tyler Junior College. And then Emma Wallace at Clear Springs High School, great engineering choice for major, but uh again, Texas A&amp;M. Uh, but it's fine. We're we're proud of all these uh students and their accomplishments, and we are grateful for Waste Connections investing in the youth of our community. Uh, a number of you attended last Monday. On May thirtieth, we held our annual Memorial Day cer- uh ceremony to recognize those that paid the ultimate sacrifice uh for our country. Uh, the services were very well done. We had Mayor Pro Tem Graffon uh do quite a bit of speaking along with our own police chief and former Marine, uh Bob Wieners there. Uh, it was a spectacular event, very tasteful and respectful for those that served our country and paid the ultimate sacrifice. Lastly, I don't have it on the slides, but I failed to include a slide that tomorrow night at the library, we'll be having our severe weather open house. Uh, our Fire Marshal's Office and Emergency Management has coordinated with a number of folks that work with us, both uh departments as well as outside vendors that we typically rely on during our hurricane and extreme weather season. So, if you're available, come out to the library and see and speak with our vendors. Thank you.
Ryan Mansfield's gonna be there. Our marshal. All right, item nine, business items. A, consider approving a license and maintenance agreement with Azteca Systems LLC and a master agreement for material and services with New Edge Services LLC for the purchase and implementation of CityWorks Software, the Community Development Department. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Steve Rocky and Robert Graffon, any discussion questions on this item? All in favor? Item B, consider awarding the Forest Bend Detention Pond Pond Construction Project Bid twenty twenty-two dash zero five to Jordan Enterprise LP. Motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Robert and Sally, any discussion, any further questions for Samantha? All in favor? Thanks for doing such a good job on that one, Samantha. Appreciate you getting those costs in close to what we had. Item C, consider approving the property sales agreement with Roger and Shannon Weaver to purchase point nine four seven oh acres being a part of Frenchman's Creek Town Home, Section Two, city of Friendswood, Galveston County, Texas.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Trish and somebody down there. Brent, Trish and Brent, thank you. Uh, any questions on that? We sort of discussed this one as well.
Yeah, the only question I have is that uh funds that hundred and forty thousand dollars is are for the
One twenty-five.
One twenty-five, is that coming out of bond dollars?
Um, it's coming out of bond dollars. It's not because it's on Clear Creek and it's gonna be pl- a part of a flood mitigation project.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor? Motion passes. Item D, consider approving an interlocal agreement with Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District for a shelving flood mitigation project located at two twelve East Arages Drive, Friendswood, Texas.
Second.
John Scott, Sally, any more discussion questions on that? All in favor? E, consider approving the interlocal agreement with the Harris-Galveston Subsidence District for an advanced metering infrastructure, large meter enhancement project grant. Have a motion for this item.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Trish and Robert?
I have a little slide.
Any more questions on that? Oh, well, thank you. Good information.
I got my questions answered earlier.
Yes, so this is a water conservation grant that the Harris-Galveston Subsidence District uh sponsors every year. Uh, this year, staff applied for a grant to pay for their large meters that are converting to automated ones. They're very expensive. We did get the grant awarded, and it's in the amount of forty-nine thousand dollars.
Thank you for applying.
Yes.
All in favor? Motion passes. Item ten, proposed resolutions and ordinances, consider resolution verifying the percentage of completion of cybersecurity training and authorizing the city manager or his designee to submit all documentation required by section two oh five four dot five one nine one of the Texas Government Code.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Robert and Trish, I know a hundred percent of the mayors completed this training. I don't know about the rest of y'all.
I got it, I got it done.
Good job. Good, good, good.
You did get a hundred percent health?
Yeah, not quite everybody was on time, but we all made it.
Oh, on time, that's a different story.
All right, let's not discuss this too much. All in favor?
I will say before I sign the resolution and submit it, everybody will have completed it.
That's good to know, yes.
Okay, item B, consider resolution authorizing the adoption of the Galveston County Multi-Jurisdiction Hazard Mitigation Grant.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Steve and Trish, more questions, anything for Brian? All in favor? Item C, consider the first and final reading of an ordinance amending the city's general budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two by approving Budget Amendment Nine and providing for supplemental appropriation and or transfer of certain funds.
Second.
John Scott and Sally, I think. All in favor?
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor? We are adjourned.